Thanks Hank, call to order, meeting of the Huntington Woods zoning board of appeals. Today is June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the time is seven thirty-three. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second Joe.
Second.
And second by David. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So the the agenda passes unanimously. Next, we go to the approval of the minutes from the meeting on May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes or a motion to revise the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thanks Joe. Was that a second from Mike?
Second, yep.
Thanks Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That, motion to approve the May tenth minutes passes. So we move now to the appeals. Looks like there's only one appeal this evening from Stephanie Borkin at one zero seven three five Vernon for variance to allow fifty-nine percent, three hundred sixty square feet of the rear yard to be covered by structures. When fifty percent is allowed contrary to section four dash six point zero three accessory building structures and uses. Section subsection seven, the total ground area covered by all accessory buildings and structures together shall not occupy more than fifty percent of the rear yard. And I see Ms. Ms. Borkin is here and I will let you make your presentation.
Okay, so thanks for listening to our, I guess, request today. Our house we purchased was a built by a builder, like it was a spec house and we built, we bought it approximately, I think, three or four years ago. And we actually went through this process when we first moved in. So this is sort of like our, I don't know, like our second time going through this. The problem that we have is that when the builder built the house, he basically used all of our allowance that we would need for some sort of patio or outdoor living space. All is already almost all used up by the garage and by the concrete. And when we first moved in, we had asked him and our realtor, like, you know, what about landscaping and patio and things like that? And they were like, well, that's up to you. You'll be allowed to, you know, do whatever you want. And we sort of looked through the code, but didn't really, you know, know the exact amounts of how much we would have to use. And it turns out that what's left after taking out the, you know, the garage and the and the driveway, there's only, I think, there's only like sixty square feet of patio, which like wouldn't even be enough for, you know, like a table of six with chairs. So what we're asking for is to build a paver patio that would be larger. So it would be, you know, going above the fifty percent, but not significantly above. It would be fifty-nine percent. And Hank, I don't know, you said that maybe you could put the picture up or?
Yeah. Do you want me to do that now for you and you can talk about it? Or I was gonna put up? Okay, hold on just a second here. Can everybody see that?
I just see the, yeah, I see your screen.
Okay, you don't see the drawing though?
I just see something that says Borkin drawing. I don't see an actual drawing.
Okay, hold on.
Maybe double click.
Yeah, it's not open yet. That's all.
Okay, hold on. Let us try this again. How about now?
Now, we just see the list, like it looks like you have to double click it in order to?
I know it's up on my screen. That's why I'm saying.
Maybe pull it to the other screen.
And it might just be a delay.
It could because it's spinning, but.
Yeah.
Let's try.
Is it the same drawing that's in our packet?
Yes. Just this one has a color for the lawn. We'll try this.
It's hard to find the packet where the expansion of the patio would be.
It's on there. You have it.
Yeah, they they have it, but it's not, I, what I did was that I sent the, hold on just one.
The word says paver patio.
Yeah.
You might be sharing, instead of sharing your screen, you might be sharing just that window, maybe?
No, it's gotta be, hold on just a second here.
There we go.
Okay. Technology saved us.
Yeah, so what we're hoping to do is put in a patio, basically what's outlined in red with pavers, so that we would have enough room for like a table and chairs. And we wanted to put maybe an umbrella over it so that we have some shade. And then, you know, maybe some other chairs, just so there's some room to basically have outdoor living space. So Hank had sent me, you know, the four things that we needed to talk about. Or I guess concerns that we needed to talk about. So I, I guess for me, the the unique circumstances regarding our house is that there is like no room to have outdoor living space based on the way that the house was built, which, you know, didn't have anything really to do with us. And there's zero shade in this area. So we are, we're on Vernon, we face Ludlow, the backyard. And so basically from like ten thirty AM till the evening, there's complete sun. We can see that there's some tree stumps that were removed, that the city must have allowed the, you know, the builder to remove. And there's really nowhere great to put a tree. What we have next to our garage is like a little swing set playground because we have a two and four year old. And so there's not really anywhere to put shade in, in a way that we can use. We tried last year, right now, the the area that's outlined in red is just basically mulch because we, you know, didn't get the approval several years ago. And so last year, we tried putting, you know, table and chairs there, but it gets muddy and it's disgusting and like nobody ever really wants to be on it. So it's not really that usable for outdoor living space. I don't think that the variance would be injurious at all to any of the neighbors. I don't think it would affect anybody except, you know, maybe make it less of an eyesore. But there's not like a muddy patch of mulch with weeds growing that we can't, you know, control. The the plan, if you can see in the picture, we're planning our our downspouts from the house will drain right into some gravel so that it won't drain directly onto the patio. So we're hoping that that will make it so that we won't have any sort of drainage issue. Our, I also had a plumber come by just to look at the site and he was somebody that helped us to initially with our sun pump and our backup sun pump. And showed him, you know, the plans of what we were having and he didn't anticipate that there would be any concern with having like a water issue onto our neighbor's lot. For number three, the special conditions and circumstances don't result from the actions of us because I don't think we, I mean, we didn't have anything to do with what, you know, was here before we moved in. Number four, I think applies to what we've all been going through with the pandemic and not having outdoor living space, you know, obviously all of us adults are able to be vaccinated. But having two young kids who are not eligible for vaccination still makes the pandemic feel very real to us. And so we are still trying to be careful with them, being able to have ways that we can be outside safely with them and social distance. I, one of my kids is special needs and is like, you know, at higher risk for complications from COVID. And we still have to be extremely careful with who we're around and what we do. And and now being summertime is the time that we can really, you know, maximize our ability to socialize safely with people. But without having outdoor living space, we don't really have much to do. And without having any place for reasonable shade, it's really not safe for our kids to be outside during most of the day. Because it's so hot and there's so much sun. You know, if we were to plant trees in that area, that would provide shade. It would take many years for us to have enough shade for it to really be helpful. And it still wouldn't, you know, help our our need that we wanna be able to sit and have a meal or sit with friends and not be in, you know, dirt and mulch. Does that, I don't know if that answers those four questions, at least that Hank had sent to me.
Yep, thank you. I don't know, if you have anything else to add, we're happy to hear it. If not, we can turn, we can turn over to Hank.
What I'll do ahead of him is I'll go through the criteria again and offer some explanations that perhaps as Borkin hasn't thought of. And see if there's any questions. I'm sure that she might be able to answer or, you know, she might want to comment on some things. So back to the first standard, the special and unique circumstances exist, which are peculiar to the land structure, building involved, which are not generally applicable to other lands, structures or buildings in the same district. The district that Ms. Borkin is in is R one D. The lots are very standard size. And the problem is, is they have a very finite amount of space in them. So you're looking at a lot that basically has sixty-two hundred and fifty square feet, which the builder has maxed out with the garage, which they wanted to get to a certain size in the house, which they wanted to get to a certain size. So the problem that comes up with this is, is that you run into a situation where the claim could be related to the difference in what counts between thirty percent of the total lot coverage, which is how we measure our total lot coverage, is anything covered by a roof. But we measure the backyard at fifty percent, which includes all structures, which includes driveway, which includes patios, which includes garage. So as a result, a lot of the lots in the R one D district take up space just by virtue of having a driveway to their garage. So while that hasn't changed and that's part of the code, some people that, whose house was maxed out, and again, as Ms. Borkin has indicated, they purchased the house. So this was already designed, this was already in progress, it's already set when Torino Homes built the house. So the problem is now they don't have a backyard. They can't put a deck, they can't put anything. So if they needed egress out of the back porch, that would be a problem. Whoever's phone that is, he could cut that out. Thank you. Thank you. And then the second one, the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the general welfare. There has been a contact from a neighbor who did not register in favor of the variance. That's been included in your packet. And three, the special conditions and circumstances do not result as from the exit of the applicant. Again, this is the self-created portion of the criteria. You can take a look at it and say, well, a patio may be a want, not a need. Perhaps it's possible for a smaller patio, but there is no space outside other than the driveway, which is large, which they can use to set a table and chairs, patio table with an umbrella. You know, pick one, you know, so those are some of the things that you can consider with that. The, it was two thousand, a new house that was built in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and seventeen. The builder was aware that he was maxing it out and that was the intent of it. But the problem that he did was is that he didn't leave anything for the owner, whether it was the Borkins or anybody else, to accommodate any kind of exterior use. So what you might want to take away from that is, is that is a patio, is some form of outdoor deck patio, entertainment venue, a reasonable use of the property? And then four, a literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of this ordinance and that the variance is the minimum necessary. The minimum necessary, you can have a discussion about. But again, you may want to take a look at it as a use of space and whether the circumstances as explained by the applicant warrant some relief. A variance does run with the land and the pandemic or what's left of it may be viewed as a temporary thing. Rear patio size, if allowed, could be determined by what would be considered a reasonable size. The house is newer, the original build was more concerned with size and space rather than outside amenities. And as it turns out now, the outside amenities have become very important to Ms. Borkin. One other thing too, is that we are looking currently in the master plan, which we are currently, you know, currently going through. And we're looking at different ways to have people be allowed to do things or have ways for people to be able to enjoy their homes, to work from their homes. So that's one of the things that we're looking at in the master plan. So lot coverage may change. Nine percent's a pretty good size ask. But is it for the use for what it's going to be, is it going to be impactful to the neighborhood? That's the decision that you have. So if you have any questions, I'm sure Ms. Borkin or myself would be happy to answer them. If not, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thanks Hank. I'm gonna open it up now to public participation on this appeal. Is there anyone from the public, it's hard for me to tell, that's on that that would like to address this appeal? Okay.
I don't know how, can I raise my hand?
Yeah, you're good. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dawn New Eklund. I am at one seven zero three four Ludlow. I am the direct backyard neighbor to the Borkins. And I have absolutely no issue with them creating more outside living space for their family. We have a wonderful relationship and I enjoy her boys being in the yard all the time. So if they are able to use their backyard space more often by having some shade and cover, I'm a hundred percent supportive of them getting a variance.
Okay, thanks very much. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this matter? All right, seeing nobody else, I'm gonna go ahead and close public participation and open it up to discussion and slash questions amongst the board. Go ahead, David.
So, you know, unfortunately, we got a, I think we had a plan from before the house was built. A big fold-up site plan, it's hard to tell exact dimensions, but if you look at the drawing that shows the paver patio, there is a pretty significant area, and I tried to look at the scenario as well, of concrete driveway that goes beyond the garage towards the lawn. I suspect really doesn't do anything. Couldn't you remove some of that concrete, some of that driveway that doesn't do anything, free up some space to allow her patio to be built without needing the variance? Because if you look at it, and again, it's not dimensioned, but it runs, I, I don't know, I mean, I bet it's twenty, thirty feet of concrete, at least three, four feet wide, that.
Well, I mean, we, we thought about that, especially after the last time when our, when our, you know, request got denied. It's, it's like you walk down our, our stairs of our rear porch and that, that line leads right up to basically like the door of the garage. And then, and then like it, there's not a good spot really in that area to put a patio that wouldn't make it that, that it, to us, it seems like over a little bit more is where we could actually set up tables and chairs without it being an awkward layout.
You know, I'm not, I'm not saying to put your tables and chairs in that area. I'm saying if you removed some of that concrete, you know, that extends towards where you wanna put the paper, even if you did like some stepping stones, I think you could solve the problem without needing a variance, you know, you free up some space. I'm surprised they poured the driveway like that. I mean, to be honest.
Well, it's so the side door, it's hard to tell from this picture, the side door from the garage, I think they made it line up with the side door of the garage so that you can walk like on patio to enter the garage immediately. And then, and then the egress window is actually quite big that comes out from the basement. And so, and then right, you can't see where I'm pointing, but there's stairs that go down. There's stairs that go down from the rear porch. I don't know if you can really understand it from the picture, but I don't know if, you know, we have to be able to back out of our garage without hitting whatever, you know, furniture is there. I mean, I guess to, to chop up concrete for that little chunk to add it to more of our, so that we could add it to more space, I guess, we didn't really consider that, but it kind of sounds like a lot of expense.
Mr. Chair, can I add something to that particular question?
Yeah, go ahead Hank.
Okay, so if you take a look down here, can everybody see my cursor?
Yep.
Okay, so here's your garage, right? So the garage and the driveway takes a turn here to get to the one side of the garage. There's a two-car garage, so there's a second bay over here. So this car cannot back out unless there's concrete here without hitting this. So you can't take the car and turn like this too far or you're gonna clip this car. So.
The air conditioner is like right off of the back porch too, which makes it very hard to back out.
Okay, well, you shouldn't, you shouldn't hit that. But this right here, if you go, if you back out here and you take a look at this and you've got approximately twenty-seven feet from here to here, and most car parking spaces are either eight or nine by twenty, that's a tight maneuver. So typically, what I'm gonna guess that they have to do is if they're gonna back out of this bay is one, two, three, and back out. So it's, it's like a, it's kind of like a three-point turn only in reverse to just get out of the driveway. So removing any part of this, which I assume, David, was, this was the area you were talking about?
Yeah, approximately.
Yeah, yeah. So it, it would just make it very difficult for that car to have egress with that. That's what I see just based on the dimensions. This part right here probably wouldn't make that big of a difference, but then you walk down, you step out onto things. From that rear, from the rear of the house. So I don't know if that clarifies it for you or anything. If I blow this up anymore, can, can you guys see that good enough or should I blow it up a little more for you?
I think we can see this, it's not up.
Not real good.
The weed plant. What's the proposed dimensions of the patio?
Um, fifteen by twenty-four. So we have, we, that's currently, like the whole area right now is currently just like mulch, basically, because we're waiting, you know, to see what we could do with it. And so that area basically gives us enough room for a table with six chairs that we can put, you know, like a, a big umbrella in the middle of. And then a little bit more space behind it where we can put a fire pit with like a couple chairs around it.
I mean, I could say like, for me in principle, I love the idea of people using their backyards and doing what they want to do. The challenge that I have here personally is if we say yes, what's the reason for saying yes? What's the case of a true hardship that's not self-created? So that's what I personally need to reconcile. I mean, honestly, I'd like to say yes to everybody who comes in. We all deal with these like, you know, these challenges. We all live on small lots, but there has to be a a real case for it or else what's the point of a zoning board?
Well.
But yeah, go ahead Mitch.
I, I'm also trying to figure this one out. I, I mean, the argument that you buy a house that you know or should have reason to know doesn't, would not permit a patio because of zoning rules. And then say, well, that's the way the house was, is, you know, it's quite circular. It's like saying, well, we're, we're stuck because there's a garage there. And if there wasn't a garage there, then we wouldn't have all that square footage taken up by a garage that prevents a patio. But we know that's an absurd argument. The concrete seems for some reason a little harder to get around and, and you sort of say, well, they overbuilt the concrete. But, but Hank has just basically demonstrated that the concrete really is needed to make the garage function. So the way you have here is, is a, a structure with dimensions that were set at purchase that automatically would have required a variance going in. You know, so I mean, I think that's our starting point logically, and it's, it's a difficult one. Other than simply saying, well, nullify what the zoning ordinance says. But I have a question to Hank, that if I could sort of segue a bit, what is the underlying rationale for this fifty percent rule?
The reason for the fifty percent rule had a few things. One was pervious and impervious surface. Second was drainage that would run onto your neighbors, could run onto your neighbors. And the third was, is that to prevent the backyard from becoming a hundred percent hardscapes and that you had, you know, for people that didn't want to mow their lawn and they put rocks back there or something like that, to have some greenery so that like even if your neighbors did look into your property, that they would be seeing some form of, of green. It's kind of a similar thing that we do for landscaping for the front yards, where you have to have a third percentage of landscaping. So.
Sorry to interrupt. Here, here's, here's my follow-up. Two, two of the three factors you just mentioned were, had to do with, with pervious versus impervious surface and drainage, which seems similar. And then, of course, green view for the neighbors, I mean, that can be ameliorated in certain ways, like screening with additional foliage, shrubs, you know, et cetera, which could screen the, screen a patio. But my question is this, why, why are, you know, let's take a wood deck where rain naturally would just run through the, you know, the spaces between the wood slats and drain into the ground below it. Why, why is that even counted? It has not, no effect on drainage.
They, they count it for accessory structures, the same way that they count it for pavement. And the same way that they count it for patios, whether the patio is concrete or whether the patio is pavers. The argument could be made that, well, you know, while decks let water through, so do some forms of pavers let water through, albeit not at the same rate that grass does. There's a difference in the sedation rate. But to answer your question, they've always counted it. So I mean, the change for that has to come through the planning commission if they were gonna stop that.
Well, what I'm getting at is, I think it's very, I mean, my own first impression is that it's difficult to approve this as presented. I'm not saying it's impossible because we haven't voted, but it strikes me as difficult. As far as, as David's suggestion was to just tear up part of the concrete driveway, not necessarily using that area as a patio, but simply removing part of the fifty-nine percent so that it shifts closer to fifty percent for the patio. That, that may not be realistic in terms of use of the driveway, but that, that might work. But what I'm suggesting is, I mean, we do have powers of interpretation. I, I don't know if you recall the last, I'm sure we recall the last appeal where we made a similar interpretation about partial versus full basements. And suggested that, that pounding square footage of the home, vis a vis a partial basement, was not necessarily what the framers of the ordinance had in mind, that they were really thinking full basement. And what I'm getting at is here, let's say that, that instead of a patio had a wood deck that allowed for rain to run right down into a, you know, a drainage area below it. So that you didn't have issue of pervious surface runoff, et cetera. Why, why couldn't we interpret that as being a structure that was not envisaged, envisaged as being what, you know, what the, the commission had in mind when they adopted this ordinance? Because they were concerned about pervious versus impervious and drainage issues.
I have something to add to that because, and, and just, you know, because all of you are on the zoning meeting, you know, we had to read through all the definitions of this and it is extremely vague with, with how it's written. And actually, when we first bought the house and they showed it to us, they sort of said that like a, like just a standalone paver patio, something like that, wouldn't even be something that we would, would need to get a variance on, which obviously wasn't true because here we are. Because what's written in, in the code is that says total ground area shall not be covered more than fifty percent by accessory structures, no, by accessory buildings and structures. So when we look through the definitions, they actually have a separate definition for accessory structure, which they give an example of being a patio. And so this doesn't actually say accessory buildings and structures and accessory structures, but elsewhere in the text, they do differentiate between structures and accessory structures. I don't know if I explained that in a way that makes sense, but to us, when they showed it to us, you know, when we, when we first moved in, we were like, okay, we don't, you know, we're not gonna have to worry about a patio if that's all we want to put in. They just said that if we wanted to do something that, you know, was like a pergola or something else like that, then that would then be considered an accessory building and then, then we would have to do, you know, get permission. So just so you know, it, it, the way it's written currently, to me. So just so you know, it it it, the way it's written currently, to me, seems sort of vague. Um, so I I think moving forward, it might be good to just make it not vague and and and, you know, include whatever it is that's supposed to be included in it.
All right, Mitch.
Well, I, I, if I understand the comment, it's that, and and I don't have the ordinance in front of me. Hank, I'm sure you could clarify. Is the, is the fifty percent count, it clearly counts buildings. Does it, does it count structures, or does it refer to accessory structures?
It says.
Or are they the same thing?
It's the structures, they're pretty much the same thing, but they also specifically say patio.
The, the applicant is, no, but the applicant is saying that a patio is referred to in the ordinance somewhere, definitionally as, as an accessory structure.
That is correct.
The fifty percent restriction refers to structures rather than accessory structure, which could lead someone who hadn't done full-blown legal workup on this to conclude that that a patio was not part of the fifty percent because it was not a structure, but rather was a different type of thing called an accessory structure. I think that's the argument being made.
If that's.
I'm not sure it's right or wrong, I'm just trying to.
Yeah. That's what I'm trying to say, is that they actually have uh an accessory structure, which they include examples of, and it says deck, patio, and then there's structure, and then there's building, and then there's accessory building. So the fifty percent rule says accessory buildings and structures. So it's like, does that word accessory refer to accessory building and accessory structure? You could say that, but then elsewhere, you know, for other sorts of rules, they say uh structure and accessory structure, which would make you think that there, they are differentiating them. But it, I'm just saying it's vague, so I don't know if, you know, it might be vague for somebody else in the future. It might be worth just to, like, clarify it.
You must have a lawyer in the family somewhere, because
You actually.
it's a reasonable argument.
You work with my dad, actually, at Huntington.
I, I was not really aware of that. Um, anyway, that, that, the point is that there's, that I'm making is that in considering this too, would we consider a a deck or other type of thing as that allowed for direct drainage and was not impervious as something we can interpret as being not part of the fifty percent, number one? Number two, is this argument being made now about um, the, the fact that the, the ordinance definition here seems to exclude accessory structures or refer to them as something different than structures and that the code somewhere uses uh the patio as an example of accessory structure and not a structure? Those are two different arguments, obviously, and I don't know if the applicant would like to build something other than a impervious patio anyway.
I mean, I, i- if it were a la, if if it was that we could do it by building a deck instead of a paver patio, we haven't explored that, but that would be fine with us. We just want something that we can be on, basically.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, thanks, Adam. Um, so Hank, one thing I wanna clarify, uh, to start out, th- this letter um from this person who is completely unidentified except for her name and her design email address. She has not identified that she lives anywhere near the resident or even in Huntington Woods. So to me. Okay, why wasn't that, why didn't she identify herself, I wonder? I just have a hard time taking this, putting any weight in that, when I don't know where this person is.
Again, you know, the, the, the pros or cons of the people that are next door or the people that uh live there. But if you took a look at the email on that, there's a signature, there's a uh, there's a name attached to that.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, usually they identify, you know, kind of where they.
Right, where they are in relation to it, and that didn't happen here.
So a- aside from that, I mean, I think we are again in in a point here where we are attorneying this thing to death and and not trying to uh discuss why this, this person's here. Uh, you know, they, they bought a house that was a builder-spec house. The driveway was poured, uh, the garage was built, the house was built. They have a, what is, I assume this is a fifty or sixty-foot lot. Everybody's entitled to a patio. The, the fifty percent number is is relatively arbitrary. Th- this was not by their own doing. This, to me, is a slam dunk approval uh to to let these people have a patio. I, I, I'm truly astonished that we're even having a discussion about this. Um, I mean, it's, yes, it's nine percent, okay, fine. Uh, that's a lot different for a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot wide lot than a, than a sixty or fifty-foot wi- wide lot. Um, I don't understand why we're circularly talking about, uh, well, again, we're attorneying the thing to death. The people deserve a patio, that's my opinion.
Hey, Hank, do you have something?
Yeah, I, I just wanna, because this came up, so I do wanna ask for clarification here. Um, Mitch, is this gonna be a conflict for you working at the same firm as her father?
I, I hadn't thought so, but if people feel it is, I, I certainly don't have to vote.
I don't think he even knows who he is, because we don't have the same last name.
Okay, but it's, but it's out there, so I think we should get a board opinion.
Don't have to vote, although, before I recuse myself, since that's a legal concept, I'm wondering if that would be part of what my fellow colleague on this board considers attorneying the situation to death.
Yes.
Okay, because I think we have a difference of view here that's fairly significant, particularly because we're interpreting a law, which seems to me hard to avoid legal concepts.
Why don't we?
You will not get me to disagree with you that you and I have a massive difference of opinion.
Um, Adam, at this point, before that continues, we should probably have the discussion about Mitch recusing himself or staying in. So if you wanna take a board vote, um, you know, somebody should make most of allow Mitch to continue in his capacity at this point in time, or someone should make most in the other way, so that the board has a consensus.
Go ahead, David.
I'm just curious, I mean, is there any real personal relationship between Stephanie and Mitch or Mitch and Stephanie's father? If there's not, then I don't have an issue.
Well, I think my kids might know Stephanie, oh, they're all grown up and don't live in Michigan.
Wow, well, everybody in Huntington Woods knows each other, I mean, I'm wondering, like.
I know her father, I mean, I'm the partner of her father. We're in different fields of law, but I, I can't say he's leaned on me, and I have no particular sympathy one way or the other based on that. But if it's appropriate, I, I have no problem uh stepping out here.
I have one more question for you, Mitch. Do you feel that you can impartially vote on this matter?
Yeah, sure, I can impartially vote, but there, you know, the appearance of conflict is a meaningful concept. Even, it's not a psychological.
Even if it's not a conflict, right? Even if it's not actually a conflict.
We do have Bree here that can step in for you.
I'm sorry, I've been having grief for a while.
I, I'm sorry, Jim.
I think we ought to avoid the perception of any conflict wherever.
I'm gonna step down from further discussion and the vote.
Okay, then, Bree, you would take Mitch's place.
Hey, do we need a motion to to affirm this, or no?
No, he just recused himself.
Okay, okay.
So he, he's taking himself out of the equation. So at that point, Bree, you're now taking Mitch's place. You can participate in the discussion and the vote.
Do we have to strike everything I said previously?
I'll check with the city.
And not considering?
I'll check with the city attorney when.
I mean, I, it sounds like.
But I don't, I don't think so, because I don't think anything that you said came up before the conflict was uh decided. So I think that's gonna be part of the record.
I've officially unheard everything Mitch said.
Uh, this, this is Jim Park. I, I have a couple of quick questions. I noticed on the original drawing, there's um, and it's also showing to the, on the right side of the existing driveway as you're heading toward the garage, um, gravel there, and and the original drawing says sediment control fence. Um, I'm wondering two things, you know, what's there today? And it would seem to me, is, is there a reason they put that in there where there is a potentially existing drainage issue that uh we might wanna consider in this? Is it on a hill, or, you know, wh- what's the condition that caused that?
I don't know what a sediment control fence is. I know the neighbors on that side have like a wooden fence. And then between their fence and our garage is like a little triangle of gravel. And the reason we did gravel there instead of grass was because our landscapers said, you're gonna have a really hard time growing grass there, because like the garage is covering it from sunshine.
Has, uh, when it rains hard, is there a washout there or anything like that?
When it rains out there, it just, no, we've never had any sort of water issue. And there's like a little, uh, like our garage is, there's like a curb between our, the end of our, our driveway and where the neighbors start on that side. And so any water that comes on just goes down that curb into the street.
Okay, uh, thanks. I just wanted to make sure we weren't ex- exacerbating a drainage issue, if that was the purpose of it. I don't think there is.
Yeah, I mean, I would, oh, go ahead, sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one more comment um a- about the size of the driveway. Um, uh, I, I, I don't agree with all the comments that were said earlier. I, I, I think, you know, judging by the, the right side of the garage, which the concrete matches up to the right side and and is not extended over, I know you don't have to turn from there, but um I have a similar condition here, and it looks like there's about three feet extra with a, a twenty-seven foot length, which adds up to somewhere around ninety square feet. Um, and to remove it, I, I do not agree that it's an excessive burden. It's, um, you know, you've got to, you've got to dig out the yard to to put pavers in anyway, and cutting and breaking apart concrete is, is not terribly uh labor or financially expensive.
Is it, is it feasible for a?
Yeah, I, I, I've done the process myself. You cut it and you break it apart with a sledgehammer and you remove.
I mean, is it, I guess, is it feasible for the rest of the, 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 the way that's driveway in the garage are uh designed? It's, it's, that part is not clear to me.
In my opinion, it doesn't need to be that wide to get the car in and out of the garage. Um, and this is just my opinion, uh, and and you could do something a little more minimal to walk around the side of the garage uh and keep the cement there, and that would allow you to, um, you know, free up some space to adjust the patio and and maybe with another concession, you're much closer to in the ballpark.
Mr. Chair, Bree, Bree hasn't had a chance to.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I can't see everybody on this.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Sure, yeah, thanks, Hank, go ahead, Bree.
I just wanted to, could I see the drawing, the original drawing of him?
Okay, it's, hold on, let me get this back up on the screen for you. Can you see that?
Um, I see just like the list of letters, zoning.
It's trying to drive me crazy, that's why.
It's doing the same thing, yeah.
Hold on, hold on. How about now?
Nope.
If we can get this back, hold on one second. Did that pop up?
No, it's okay, I just was curious what, where the garage line is on that, but it's okay.
I'll keep working at it while you guys talk, hold on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think I have many questions. I just, um, it seems, it seems pretty clear, you know, just that it's a, a little over what is allowed and that it would make outdoor living much more easy and accessible, so. I get it.
Yeah, I mean, fr- frankly, I, I, I'm not, I'm not super concerned. I mean, I thi- I think, I think the applicant has, has addressed the drainage issue. Uh, and and as a neighbor, I, I, I mean, I'm not so concerned about the drainage issue um with respect to this particular project. Um, you know, I also see that there is still, based on this picture, I, I, I can't tell what the dimensions are, but there is, you know, significant, there is still significant lawn. Um, and, and I, I think it was Mike who said it, or maybe it was David, and I apologize, but, you know, the, the fact that they bought this house from a builder and with, I, I'm not so sure that, that they should be expected to do the due diligence to see that a patio, that to see that they maxed out the space in the backyard, um, that the builder maxed out the space when they bought the house. I, I, I'm just not so sure that that's, that that's the responsibility of, of the applicant here. I'm happy to, I'm happy to discuss other, other points of view on that. Um, but that's, I, I think that's kind of where I'm falling. Um, does anyone else have anything else to add? If I, I can't see, Joe, I see your hand, go ahead, Joe.
Oh, yeah, I, I think everybody, you know, really has a reasonable expectation that they can have a patio. Okay, so I think we can establish that. I don't think we can take out enough concrete to offset the size of the patio we're talking about here, truthfully. So I, I don't think that removing concrete is not gonna solve this problem. And truthfully, we're only talking about nine percent over the, the, the allowable amount, right? Fifty-nine percent versus fifty, so it's not really all that significant. Um, my personal opinion is I think we should go ahead and uh allow this to proceed.
I would just add that.
Go ahead. Concrete on a side in the patio over
It's okay.
free up significant space on the other side of the patio where trees can be planted, et cetera. You could pick up green space. And remember, this coverage is not just about drainage, it's also about free space. Uh, that's all I'd say.
Well, it appears Stephanie has enlisted some lobbyists that I do not wish to, uh, you know, contend with there. So I, I'll just say, sort of paraphrasing myself in previous meetings, that this seems like exactly the reason that the ZBA exists and why people come here and explain what they're looking for. And we understand that these are issues that the, and and things that run with the land and aren't supposed to be so particular to a given family and a given time. And we acknowledge that, and then say, yes, of course, have your patio, enjoy it. And I'm not saying that on all of our behalf, but that's certainly what I would vote for and make a motion for others to vote for if we're, and when we're ready.
David, did you have anything else?
I have one question, Hank, do you know what the total lot coverage is? I mean, if, if.
It was. It was like, uh, forty-nine point nine-nine percent.
For the whole, for the whole house or just the back?
For the whole, no, for the whole, for the whole thing. The backyard, uh, they needed three-hundred-and-ninety square feet to accomplish this patio. So if there's a motion to be forthcoming, it should be that the patio and the dimensions that would accommodate are, are the, the dimensions that would she'd have to give you, um, because we have fifty-nine percent, three-hundred-and-sixty square feet, might give her a little bit of latitude to change that, so it doesn't cover as much. But she still has to stay out of the side yard setbacks. And she would still, she wouldn't be near the rear yard setbacks, but she would still have to stay out of the side yard setback, or that would be a different variance.
Well, I gue- I guess what I'm asking, what is, what's the code on how our lot coverage, our max lot coverage, front to back?
Front to back is thirty percent.
Okay, do we know what their overall lot coverage is for this, you know?
Twenty, twenty-nine point nine-nine.
So this, take the fifty percent of the rear yard out, and the three-sixty does not put them over the max?
No, there's, there's two things here, and this is, this is where the confusion arises, and this is what I was talking about earlier. We have two types of lot coverage. We have total lot coverage, which is thirty percent, and the house meets it. Right now, that stands. The patio, which they're questioning, does, which they would like, doesn't count on the thirty percent. So we have two different areas. We have an area where the patio counts, and we have an area where the patio doesn't count. It counts in the fifty percent of the rear yard, but does not count in the total of the thirty percent. And the difference is, is that it reads for backyard coverage or for total lot coverage, anything covered by a roof. And then it's reads for the backyard, it's anything, you know, accessory structures, accessory buildings, all of that, in which they include a driveway, and they also include a, uh, they also include a patio. So the argument could be made is that, look, if somebody has, and they have a set aside, so that zone district, they have a four-hundred-and-forty-square-foot So the argument could be made is that, look, if somebody has, and they have a set aside, so that zone district, they have a 440 square foot set aside for this. So if they decided they only wanted to build a car and a half garage and not use their driveway, they still have the set aside covered by the garage, but they wouldn't have all the driveway.
Right.
So it doesn't, it makes sense. It's, there's an issue with that.
By our code, somebody has a swing set. I mean, that's by code, consider that we should be counting, correct?
That is correct according to
But we don't count it. Nobody's
We have, we haven't counted because we don't have any records of it.
Right.
Nobody, we don't, they don't get permits for swing sets. We don't require them to be inspected. We don't have anything to do with
If you have a sandbox, that would be a structure, a portable kiddie pool, that would be a structure.
That is true.
Okay. Well, I guess what I'm saying is that if everybody can have those things and they're not counted, for her to have a patio or not be allowed a patio that is counted and it's taken up essentially the same portion of a backyard is depriving her of a right that her neighbors have. And with that in mind, I motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, uh, from David.
So, I'm sorry, can we flush the motion out just a little bit? So you're moving to approve based on the fact that it meets the standards? What is your, what is the
If she is not permitted the 360 feet, she is deprived, being deprived of the same rights that her neighbors enjoy by having uncounted accessory structures. Which a lot of us have, I'm sure. Sure. There's people on this call right now that have accessory structures in their backyard that aren't being counted.
I thought a structure was something that had some footings built into it.
Not, not for us. Not, that's not our, our code.
To be defined as a, a permanent structure, I, I would say.
Is that true, Hank?
No, because patio pavers and that are typically laid dry.
Meaning they're not concreted in, they're not.
Meaning they're not cemented, they're not concreted in, they don't require a footing.
All right. So was I clear on the rationale for the motion then?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Um, so with that, I have the motion and I'm looking for a second. Second, Mike. Let's see Mike's second. All in favor? Hi.
Hi. Can you do a roll call vote?
Yeah, yeah, Joe.
Yes.
Uh, David, yes. Um, Ben?
Ben, you're muted.
Muted. Hi, that's a thumbs up. Bree?
All right, yes.
Hi.
Uh, Jim?
Hi.
And Mike? I count seven, Hank.
Okay.
Seven in favor. Um, so congratulations, Ms. Forkin. You, uh, have your patio and with that, I move on to other business and I don't see any here, Hank.
No.
I'll open it up to, I'll open it up to public participation. Or Hank, did you have something?
No, I just wanted to remind everybody that you're going to be getting some notices, uh, you know, to participate in some master plan surveys and things like that. And I would definitely encourage you to, um, it's a great opportunity to bring up, uh, things that you see or things that you repeatedly see that perhaps you don't want to see. So, you know, um, th- this is an opportunity to help us have a document that will frame that. And, uh, the master plan and the zoning ordinance will eventually link up hopefully a hundred percent. But in order to do that, um, we will be asking for more of your participation. And for those people that did make it out to the visioning session that was at the, uh, RAC Center, greatly appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Hank. Uh, I'll open it up now to public participation. Is there anyone else from the public that wants to speak or present? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close public participation and I'm now looking for a motion to adjourn, uh, this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, who was that? Was that Mike? Hey, Mike, uh, so Mike's motion as Joe's second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hank.
Very much.
Thank you.